I'm gonna miss that.
Oh, yeah.
Big time.
Oh, my word. I brought my own pen tonight for change.
Yeah, I'm not 420.
I gave your last one back. I put it in your folder.
Oh, you didn't?
Yeah. It's quiet.
I hate this stuff. You're just really pretty pictures.
Fifty-nine.
Yes, it's time for meditation and reflection before the meeting starts.
Didn't bring a stopwatch.
Before I do the pledge. Okay, okay.
About this. I didn't want to be going, I don't know how to use this thing.
I mean, I thought that she used it. I'm always just thinking, your phone is right.
I know. That's what we're gonna use. I don't know how to use it, but we're... Fifty-nine.
I agree.
I'm ready.
How the hell you get these out?
We had to be an idiot.
Need to go up?
Yeah.
Gotta pull here.
Might have to be someplace.
That far now. Pull up on there, go. Stay up.
Good evening. I'd like to call the November meeting of the Lafayette City Council to order. Will you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Reely, will you conduct the roll call, please?
Heidi.
Here.
Clinker.
Here.
Nargi.
Here.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Here.
Campbell. Brown.
Here.
Allersmeyer.
Here.
Downing.
Here.
Luis Wainerson.
Here.
Corn present.
Thank you. Presentation and disposal of claims.
Renewed Department Monthly September, Water Works Department Monthly September, Police Department Monthly September, Fleet Maintenance Monthly September.
And just so everyone knows, those reports are on file in the Lafayette City offices. If you are interested in reading them. Presentation of petitions and communications.
There are none.
Thank you. There are no ordinances for second reading tonight, so we're gonna go straight to our ordinances for first reading.
Ordinance number 2021-58, amendment to ordinance number 2010-11, inclusion of certain properties in the local Ninth Street Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Thank you.
I move with here ordinance 2021-58.
Second.
Thank you. Good evening. Mr. Collier.
John Collier from the Economic Development Department. You have before you three ordinances tonight for new local historic districts. Two are actually expansions of existing districts, and one is a new individual property district. So this one, 2158, is to add three adjacent properties to the local Ninth Street Hill Historic District. The properties include 908, 920, and 928. 908 is a free classic-style home built in about 1895 and is rated as contributing in the Tippecanoe County interim report for historic sites and structures. The second is 920 State Street, which is the Han Museum, and it also includes the Carriage House. The Han Museum is a classical revival style built in 1914 and is rated outstanding while the Carriage House is 20th-century functional style and was built in about 1917. It is rated as contributing. The last of the three properties is 928 State Street, which is a Queen Anne-style, built in about 1890, is rated as outstanding. The Historic Preservation Commission reviewed the petitions and recommended approval for all three properties to be included in the local South Ninth Street Hill District, and they asked for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Is there any public comment to this ordinance? All right, seeing none, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargi.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes for first reading, seven-zero.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Ordinance number 2021-59, amendment to ordinance number 2010-11, inclusion of certain property in the local Centennial Trinity Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance 2021-59 on first reading.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, the second one is, as you said, 329 North Sixth Street. This is actually First Christian Church, and we hope to expand this to be part of the Centennial Trinity Historic District. If you recall, several months ago, Trinity United Methodist Church was designated, and so this is an expansion of that district. Do I need to say about changing the name?
Yeah.
Do I? Okay. So when we designated that original ordinance, we called it the Centennial/Trenity Methodist Local Historic District. That was short-sighted, not thinking about the fact that other adjacent properties may want to join and may not want to have the name Trinity Methodist as their historic district name. So we have opted and recommended that we change the name of that district to Centennial/Trenity rather than Trinity Methodist and just call it Trinity, because the adjacent properties are largely churches. So if others join, like this one, they're in a group called Centennial-Trenity Local Historic District. So anyway, this, the original church, which is a Craftsman-style, was built in about 1913. There was a Gothic Revival addition added in 1952, or 54, excuse me, and then another additional in 1965. The building is rated as notable, and the commission recommended its approval and request that you do the same.
Are there any questions from the council?
We don't need any amendment for that, right? This is...
No, we don't. It's already included in the ordinance, so you can just adopt it as is.
Good.
Any public comment towards this ordinance? All right, seeing none, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargi.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes on first reading, seven-zero.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2021-60, an amendment to ordinance number 2010-11, establishing a local Perrin 316 Tinkler Street Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I move to approve ordinance number 2021-60.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Collier.
Okay, this is for an individual property at 316 Tinkler. This property was, or house was built in about 1883. It has had an addition. It's a T-plan style with steep gable roofs, built in, actually, I already said that, 1883. It's rated contributing, and the commission recommended its approval and inclusion, and they request that you approve it as well.
All right. Any comments from the council? Any public comment? All right, seeing none, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargi.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes on first reading, seven-to-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collier.
Ordinance number 2021-61, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the Tippecanoe County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from CB to PD CC east side of South Fourth Street, between Romegan and Alabama Streets, Brownstone Development petitioner.
Mr. Clinker?
I move with here ordinance 2021-61 on first reading.
Second.
Thank you. All right.
Good evening. Chris Schellmann of Gutwin Law, 250 Main Street, here on behalf of Brownstone Development. Principal of Brownstone Development, Jim Rao, is here as well, and we're happy to present the final step of a project that's taken several years now but has delivered an unbelievably developed project that consists of 12 units along Fourth Street. Was really the first project to sort of kicked off the next phase of Fourth Street as it goes into the future. The request would allow for the 12 units to be converted to condominiums and be available for single-family homeownership. We think this product, very high-end apartments, condos, provides an additional living option for those wanting to be near downtown. Lots happening downtown, and this would be a higher-end condo to kind of fill that need. We'd be happy to answer any questions, but this request was recommended unanimously by the Plan Commission, and we respectfully request your approval as well.
Are there any questions or comments from the council? Any public comment towards this ordinance? Seeing none, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargi.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes on first and final reading, seven-zero.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2021-62, an ordinance to amend ordinance 2021-54, an ordinance fixing the salaries of the sworn protective occupation and law enforcement members of the police and fire departments of the city of Lafayette, Indiana, for the year 2022.
Madam President, I move with here 2021-62.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
So as you all recall, last month, we adopted all of our budget and salary ordinances. Subsequent to that final adoption, it was discovered that there was a Scrivener's error on the exhibits for the poll salary ordinances that resulted in the incorrect amount being listed for the clothing allowance. So this ordinance today will correct that Scrivener's error and establish the clothing allowance for both police and fire at 1,500 a year.
All right, very good. Any questions or comments from the council? Any public comment towards this ordinance? All right, seeing none, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargi.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes on first reading, seven-zero.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2021-63, an ordinance for additional appropriation of local road and street fund, Fund 2020, and general fund, Fund 1010, and for appropriation reduction of general fund, Fund 1010.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I move with here and approve ordinance number 2021-63.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, this ordinance has a couple different things in it. So as you heard, the first part in dealing with the additional appropriations for local road and street, at the end of the year, we felt like we had enough money left in there that we could pave some more streets. So we paved Summerfield, Manitou, Fox Hall, Meadow, South 36th Street, and Shoshone, which obviously got us quite a bit more paving. So anytime we think we can get it worked out to continue to pave, we didn't budget that originally. We wanted to be a little bit careful, but as the year went on, we felt comfortable spending that to get some more roads paved. So we would appreciate your approval for that part of it. And the second part of it is that to move money from the general fund and a reduction of the general fund, and Jeremy, that's for Lisa when she's gone, right? So without going into like hip, I guess, I have an employee that needs to be off work for a medical procedure for about six weeks, and so I'm gonna need somebody to fill in. And so we're gonna hire a retired city employee to come back, fill in that spot. And since Jeremy, we didn't fill the deputy controller's position for quite some time, he has budget left, and so we're gonna move that, what he has left, over to my department. So for six weeks, I can have a replacement in there while we have an employee that's having a medical procedure done.
Okay.
Appreciate your approval. So we're not spending any more money. We're just moving it to a different spot.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. Will you be... I'll learn to speak English in a minute. Will you be requiring a suspension of the rules for this?
No, and we cannot suspend the rules for this, because an additional appropriation requires a public hearing next month.
Yeah, and we're okay. We can get it in December and get it done before the end of the year so the books balance. It'll be fine. But thank you for asking. I appreciate the consideration.
Any other questions or comments about this ordinance? Any public comment towards this ordinance? All right, seeing none, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargi.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Ordinance passes on first reading, seven-zero.
Okay, and we do need to set a public hearing for this ordinance on December 6th at 6:01.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Motion passes by unanimous voice vote.
Thank you.
All right, resolution 21-30, a resolution approving the 2022 Common Council Calendar of Meetings.
Mr. Clinker?
I move, we hear, resolution 2021-30.
Second.
Thank you.
So this establishes the council meeting dates for 2022. They, as usual, are on the first Monday of the month, with the exception of 4th of July and Labor Day. Those will be on the Tuesday, first Tuesday of the month, for those two months.
Any questions or comments from the council? Any public comment from the audience? We're ready for a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargi.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Resolution passes on first and final reading, seven-zero.
Thank you.
Resolution 2021-31, a resolution ratifying and approving the First Amendment of sale and development agreement for the South Eighth Street redevelopment project.
What's the pleasure of the council?
I move, we hear, resolution 2021-31.
Second.
Thank you.
Good evening. Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director. If you remember, earlier this year, the council approved, and also the Redevelopment Commission approved, the sale and development agreement for South Eighth Street. And we were very pleased when Ryder Partners, represented by Jeff Ryder, came forward with a proposal for that site that aligned with our goals and vision for the redevelopment of that site. We're here today, though, to make a slight amendment to that agreement. As Jeff approached us with asking if he could work within the existing zoning that's already on the site, which is R2 and R2U. The original agreement asked for it to be rezoned to a planned development. But again, our vision and goals for it was to do primarily single-family homes and duplexes and such for that area. And again, with the current zoning, it can be done under that. So this would help streamline the process and save some expense and time as well. Jeff is planning on breaking ground next year, so we're excited to get the project off the ground, coming in early in '22 and moving forward with it. I'm happy to answer any questions, and Jeff's here, too, if you have any questions.
All right, any questions or comments from the council? All right, any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargi.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Resolution passes on first and final reading, seven-to-zero.
Thank you.
Resolution 2021-32, a resolution approving an agreement between the city of Lafayette, Indiana, and the city of Lafayette Employee Alliance, representing Water Works, Lafayette Renew, Street Sanitation, Fleet Maintenance employees.
Thank you.
Madam President. I hear, approve, resolution 2021-32.
Thank you, Mr. Downing.
Second.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Mayor?
Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, this agreement between the city of Lafayette and the city of Lafayette Employee Alliance, it's a four-year agreement. As you know, we negotiate contracts with the Fraternal Order of Police and the Firefighters Union, and we also negotiate a contract with several other city departments under this employee alliance. There is very little change to this agreement. Basically, we raised the clothing allotment for this group to make it more in line with what their needs are, and other than that, it's basically the same. We just had a couple meetings. It was pretty simple, quite honest. We've got great contract, great benefits, vacation time, personal time, bereavement time, you know, holidays, you name it. So they were, people were happy. They did want the clothing allotment changed. So we made a $100 change to the clothing allotment for them, and would appreciate your approval of the agreement. Everybody signed off on it, so we just need the council to ratify it.
Any questions or comments from the council? Any public comment toward this ordinance, or resolution, I'm sorry? All right, seeing none, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargi.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Resolution passes on first and final reading, seven-to-zero.
Thank you.
Resolution number 2021-33, a resolution of the Common Council of the city of Lafayette, Indiana, approving an amendment and reinstated lease between the Lafayette Redevelopment Authority and the Lafayette Redevelopment Commission, authorizing the issuance of bonds by the Lafayette Redevelopment Authority and other matters related thereto Consolidated Creasy Central Economic Development Area projects.
Thank you. Mr. Clinker?
I move with here, resolution 2021-33 on first reading.
Second.
Thank you.
Scott, with our bond counsel, if you could come up and present that for us. Thank you.
Evening, council. My name is Scott Frizzell, and I'm with Krigge de Vault, Bond Counsel for this transaction. Before you this evening is a resolution relating to the refunding of the Lafayette Redevelopment Authority's lease rental bonds of 2014, which were issued for the Consolidated Creasy Central Economic Development Area projects. Those bonds were issued on December 23rd, 2014, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed 16.16 million. The 2014 bonds were issued for the purpose of procuring funds to acquire and construct certain local public improvements, more specifically set forth in the lease supplement. Indiana law authorizes the refunding of the 2014 bonds in order to achieve savings. The city's municipal advisor has determined that approximately 600,000 can be saved by refunding the 2014 bonds. On October 28th, 2021, the Redevelopment Commission held a public hearing regarding the amended lease, and they approved, subsequently approved, the amended lease and pledged certain TIF revenues to the payment on the lease. The Redevelopment Authority also held a meeting on October 28th to approve the amended lease and the refunding bonds. So before you this evening is a resolution which approves the amended and restated lease agreements for the projects. The lease payments will be derived from the tax increment generated from the Consolidated Crease Central Lafayette Allocation Area and Consolidated Creasy Lane Allocation Area. There will also be a special benefits tax backup to the debt service payment, or the lease rental payments, sorry. The tax increment will also be pledged on parity with certain outstanding obligations and subordinate to other obligations. The resolution before you this evening also authorizes the authority to issue the refunding bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed 16.1 million, with an interest rate not to exceed 6% and for a term not to exceed August 1st, 2039, excuse me. And that is the same bond term for the 2014 bonds, so we will not be extending the term of the bonds. The current advanced refunding of the 2014 bonds, they're outstanding in the amount of 14.82 million. And the resolution before you permits other actions in relation to the lease amendment and the bond issuance. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So same funding, just 400,000 savings, you said?
Approximately 600,000.
600,000 savings.
Thirty thousand per year.
Same mechanism for funding.
Correct, yeah, same TIF revenues and special benefits tax.
Yep, got you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Any public comment toward this ordinance? Seeing none, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargi.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Allersmeyer.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Resolution passes on first and final reading, seven-zero.
Thank you.
Resolution 2021-34, a resolution approving Big Four Trail Master Plan.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I move that we hear and approve resolution 2021-34 on first reading.
Thank you. Thank you both. All right, Mrs. Deverall?
Hi, good evening. R. J. Deverall, the Economic Development Department. The resolution before you is in order to adopt the Big Four Trail Master Plan, and I have parts of two reports that have already been written by the project manager, Jessica Nix, and senior transportation planner, Doug Poe, with the Area Plan Commission. So they said it all very well. The study is jointly funded through the city of West Lafayette, city of Lafayette, and the county commissioners. The study is intended to serve as a guiding document to help in the funding, development, and connection of bicycle and pedestrian routes through Tippecanoe County, which will eventually connect greater Lafayette community to Indianapolis via the Big Four Regional Trail. This trail was originally known, and some of you may remember the name, Farm Heritage Trail. So, but it's along the Big Four Railroad right-of-way that's been abandoned. So the study does, it focused on four things. First, identifying and existing potential connections, prioritizing future projects. And those two pieces gathered input during five different public meetings. Next, identifying funding sources, and then the, creating a study which would provide a foundation for future development plans for alternate transportation through the Big Four Corridor. And so that was from Jessica Nix, the project manager at Butler-Fairman &amp; Seifert. And then Doug Poe, transportation planner, had written a staff report which was presented at the Tech Transportation Committee. And at that meeting was approved and a recommendation to pass it on to the policy board. So in it, he talks about West Lafayette, Lafayette, and Tippecanoe County developing this master plan together. And the study explored feasibility of a multi-use path for pedestrians, bicycles, and other non-motorized modes of transportation to address both recreational and transit use across Tippecanoe County. So not only will this trail connect multiple communities within the county, but it will complete a missing piece of the Big Four Regional Trail as developed, and the route that continues through central and northwest Indiana. Right now, the Big Four Trail connects the towns of, from Indianapolis up to Zionsville and almost, and Colfax, and almost to Clark's Hill. And there's only three sections missing, and two of those sections recently received funds through the Next Level Trails program. So again, we've been working on this since early February. There were five public meetings, site visits. There is a public survey that was out and available for people to comment on. So at this point, it has been heard by Tech Transportation going to their policy board. It's being heard today and hopefully adopted and approved. The county council, or county commissioners, will hear it on the 15th of this month and West Lafayette during their December council meeting. The county council or county commissioners will hear it on the fifteenth of this month, and West Lafayette during their December council meeting. So, the policy board will hear it on the eighteenth of this month, and we're just going through the steps. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments from the council? Any public comment toward this ordinance? Thank you. Seeing none, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Hollersmeyer.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Resolution passes on first and final reading seven zero.
Thank you.
Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-five. A resolution adopting provisions of Indiana Code five dash twenty-three.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I move we hear and consider resolution two thousand twenty-one dash thirty-five.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, before you have a resolution to adopt a new potential way of developing projects here in the City of Lafayette, as you know, there's some of the very traditional ways that we do through the city council, through bonding, through other types of financing out of cash, and we bid, and then we've also recently used what's called CMC to build the new police station and the current new parking garage that's under construction. It's a new method that we were able to use that we felt were the most advantageous to build that project. Another mechanism that is available to us is called Build, Operate, and Transfer. It's not a way that we have ever used before, but as most of you have heard me talk about it a little bit across the periphery here, is we're getting ready to develop our new Public Works Campus. As you know, the street department, sanitation, TID are all located down here in downtown. That's obviously no longer the center of the city, and if you've been by there, that building has lived the test of time, but it is definitely on its last leg. So, it built sometime back in the fifties. So, we were able to, several years ago, if you recall, negotiate a very favorable land deal with Caterpillar to purchase about fifteen acres across from Cat Park out there off McCarty Lane. If you've been down through that area, you've noticed that we have our new four-thousand-ton salt dome there, which has proved to be very helpful. One, because we can hold four thousand tons at a time now as opposed to a thousand, but also because we're able to disperse assets during snowstorms from a more centralized location here in the community as they fill up their salt. So, we've reached the point, we've talked about this for a while, where we're ready to actually move forward with the new Public Works Campus. We have it under design, so it will be, again, like I said, street, fleet, sanitation, TID, and if it'll all fit, and I hope it will, park, central maintenance. So, we will be consolidating all of those into one location over time at this new facility. We believe that the Build, Operate, Transfer methodology for that project may, in fact, be the most advantageous for us to build this particular building. Like I said, buildings. Sometimes we use a very traditional method. We've tried the CMC, which actually worked very well for the police station, the parking garage. We're very pleased with the progress that's taken place, the way the bidding worked. We're ahead of schedule and under budget right now, so... But, again, I think it's important that we always explore all of our options as we look at these new facilities. So, this resolution would, the council would authorize us to explore that possibility for using, and if it deemed appropriate, to use that type of mechanism. So, Jackie, did you want to give a brief overview of what BOT is?
Sure, I can expand. You covered it pretty well. So, it's really just an alternative method of procurement for our public works projects. Mayor talked about, we have our traditional design bid, build, and then the CMC, which we use for the public safety building, of which we issued, council, remember, bonds in order to finance this. So, Build, Operate, Transfer is an alternative procurement method that can allow us to finance, construct, design, you know, all of those things. It's just an alternate method of procurement, and it starts off first. We cannot use that unless the city council authorizes us to use the BOT methodology. If we do, and if we decide to move forward with the McCarty Public Works Campus, the process begins by requesting proposals from proposed offers. Then, once the city receives those, they're able to be evaluated, and then we can choose to continue with the BOT process, or choose to terminate it at that point and go on with a different method. Some of the benefits of using the BOT method is that it can provide the city more control in selecting the successful offer. It allows for the opportunity to negotiate best and final offers, similar to what we did in the CMC, and it provides a single point of responsibility to, for us to deal with. So, it's really just another tool in our toolkit when we think it is appropriate to be able to use to do some of these projects. But, again, we first have to authorize it to be used.
Very good, thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, we're ready for a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Aye.
Clinker.
Aye.
Nargie.
Aye.
Reynolds.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye.
Hollersmeyer.
Aye.
Downing.
Aye.
Resolution passes first and final reading seven to zero.
Thank you. Are there any reports of standing committees?
There are none.
Reports of special committees?
There are none.
Okay. And then, report by the mayor?
Yep, I've got just a short one. I'm gonna keep it relatively short because it's gonna be a little bit emotional for me, as I imagine it's gonna be a little bit emotional for most of you. But, it's with a heavy heart, but also with a glad heart that I announced tonight that this will be Councilman Heidi's last meeting. He'll be stepping down due to some health concerns that he has, and he, please, will, in the future, here, make it very difficult to continue to participate and to get to the meetings. And being the honorable person that he is and a man of incredibly high integrity, he doesn't believe that that's correct to continue to participate or accept the salary and not be able to do that to its fullest and highest. And I think all of you that know Lon, that's the way he is. He just doesn't... He wants to do the right thing. He loves Lafayette as much or more than anybody I know, and, but he's also a man of very high integrity and character that believes if doing things right, and if he can't fulfill it to its highest mission, then he believes it's time to allow someone else to step into that role to carry on the good things that we've done. Lon's been with us since the very beginning, so played a role in all of the expansions at Subaru, Caterpillar, C-175 large-engine platform, Kirby Risk, GE, Non-Shawn, downtown buildings that we see, Loeb Stadium, Columbian Park, and those lists go... Hey, you're getting me tired. On and on. And he's got a great sense of humor, right? So, so, his last day is gonna be effective on November the fifteenth, and certainly at a later date. We look forward to doing something with Lon and his family to commemorate what is, in my opinion, an incredibly long and distinguished career. And you've been a mentor to me since I was a kid at Jeff High School, in the way that you treat people and the way that you care about this community. So, God bless you and your family. Thank you for your service to Lafayette, and we look forward to seeing you around. Don't be a total stranger. Just like I wrote it, Coach. Just like you wrote it, Coach, yeah.
Okay, and then... We do have a report from the Greater Lafayette Climate Action Plan Leadership Committee. Mrs. Deverall?
I just have to say, this reminds me of when I got married, and my husband got to get up and speak at the first, and I said, I should have gone first. This is a pretty tough act to follow. So, I assume you've heard about the Greater Lafayette Climate Action Plan. We are about halfway through a two-year process, and I recommended to the leadership committee that it might be time for us to come and kind of give everybody a quick update. So, I'm presenting here. West Lafayette had their update last month, and the county will be hearing it later this month. So, Climate Action Plan, the phases one and two began in the fall of 2020, and then in mid-2021, we entered into phases three and four. So, during the first two phases, we developed the vision statement and mission statement. So, vision statement, "A climate resilient community, a reduced carbon footprint, and an equitable quality of life for all within Greater Lafayette." The mission statement, "To build a resilient Greater Lafayette by designing policies and implementing initiatives to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and protect equitable quality of life for current and future generations." So, that was phases one and two. We are now into phase three, where we have greenhouse gas inventory that's complete, thanks to two great interns this summer. And then gathering input from the public and stockholders, or stakeholders, sorry. So, we have an advisory committee of at least twenty-five members now, and those members represent different people in the community. Yeah, I'm not right. I'm drawing a blank. Okay, so, but we look at, you know, we're looking at energy. We have people who are representing healthcare, education, small business, industry, so that we can get input from a variety of people in our community. So, during our greenhouse gas inventory, of course, we found that, and you wouldn't be surprised, industry, you know, makes a major part of it, but then even transportation, commercial energy, and residential use, you know, they are each pretty equal in what they contribute. So, we're looking to the future ways that we can help reduce those greenhouse gases. And what we're looking at are a couple of givens that we're assuming are just, you know, assuming as fact. In the winter and spring, it will be wetter. In the summer, it will be drier and hotter, and how do you prepare for that and deal with it? And if you are someone in a community with means, that's gonna be easier for you. But, when we look at people in the community who are more vulnerable because of socioeconomic conditions or status, household, you know, are the households, is everyone over sixty-five? Are there single-parent households or people with disabilities, minority status? And then, you know, housing and transportation limitations. So, we are, we are, we're reaching out, we're trying to touch everyone in the community and make sure that all voices are heard so that when that plan is done about this time next year, no one will be able to stand up and say, "I didn't know about this. Nobody asked me what I thought." So, and there are a number of ways, even now, that you can get involved. There's the GreaterLafayetteClimate.com website that you can go to. On that website, there's currently our first survey, which is still in place. We've got, we've had between five and eight hundred people already respond to that survey, and it is in both English and Spanish, and we are currently working on survey number two. But, if you go to that website, there is, our first newsletter is there, and we are working on our second newsletter. So, we're trying to keep everyone informed of what we're doing, and we just thought it would be a good time to come to you and let you know. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Well, thank you very much for the update. We appreciate it. All right, are there any reports of city councilmen tonight? Okay, we're time for the public comment. You will be given three minutes to speak, so is there anyone here with any public comment? All right, go ahead.
Because I was reading the agenda, and I heard about the site where the street department is now on Third Street. And as you know, there is a building there with an incredible mural painted on the side of it, the conductor. And just as a point of interest, the person who painted that, Cobre, is the name that he goes by from Argentina. We have the distinction of being the first city in the U.S. that he painted a mural in, and it's on that building. And when I look at that and I hear about the plans for it, I think that'd be a great park, but what would be even greater if there would be a way to stabilize just that one wall, take down the rest of it, I don't care. But, at the time when it finally happens, if the mural is still in pretty good shape, because it was power washed, we repainted it, once it was painted, it was coated, you know, we're trying to help it last as long as it can. And if it's in decent shape, and that wall might be of some use to the future park plan, I would love to see that happen, so.
Thank you. All right, any other public comment? All right, Mr. Heidi, for the last time.
I move to adjourn and go home.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you, everybody.